I shouldn't need it, but I have it if I need it, right? Well, there you go. All right. Want to do roll call and then we'll do the pledge?
Certainly, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Here.
I'm going to ask Julio with our code enforcement to lead us on the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I need a motion to excuse the mayor.
Shall I move?
Second.
You want to call that?
Councilmember Jablonsky? Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes. The, I'm going to call up Kathy Sullivan for the school advisory board to address our scholarship applicants who qualify for scholarship. However you want to do it, there.
You might be able to grab that mic and hold it. Not that we can't hear you, but it's recorded also. Somebody wants to go back and watch it later.
Anyway.
There you go.
I always want to talk to people about the scholarship, just real briefly, in case you don't know about it. And there are some people here, obviously, for it. But this is a big deal in our town. Most towns have a scholarship, and we didn't. And we worked really hard to have one. And I think what was different is we wanted to make sure, because we believe in our town, we're a small town, we've worked so hard, and we're a volunteer town. That's what we wanted to be our main criteria for the scholarship. And I think that that says so much about our young people. You hear things throughout the world, everything going on, and if you can teach children to have pride in their own communities, you're making me nervous, Bob. If you can make sure the kids have pride in their own communities, I think that they grow up and they take that with them. And especially here in Southwest Ranches, where, as parents, we're so proud of our neighborhood, but sometimes the kids are like, oh, man, I wish I lived in Ivanhoe so I could ride my bike next door, and things like that. But as they grow up and they get in high school, and they do these volunteer hours, and they do them for our town, I think they get a taste of the things that we do. They're different, maybe, than other towns, and they're special. And it's that awakening for them, right before they leave us, that really about having pride in your neighborhood. And I think this is just a theme that needs to go across the country, that if everybody would take care of their own neighborhoods and have pride in it, I think it would go a long way in the way that the world works. So, anyway, this is about the kids tonight. For everybody to help us raise money, I just want to say thank you so much. This is what we do all year. We've worked very hard to raise this money. And I'm going to call out their names, and if you'll come up and get your paperwork. And if someone's not here, but someone's here to get it for them, just please come up. And then stay up here for a picture. Kishani? I'm not even going to attempt your last name, baby.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Caitlin Hodgers? Kyle Gleisner? Congratulations. Samantha Schroeder? Cheyenne Demetrius? Congratulations. It's special writing. Vivian? Vivian Martinez? Shawna Stevens? Sierra Stevens? Dylan Saunders? Dylan Hernandez? Does the council want to come up with a picture with them? And anybody on the board, would you like to come forward? You get it one side?
If you guys could kind of crunch it together just a little bit. And why don't you open yours up, and yours as well? Fold the tops back. There we go. Soon as you're done, Sully.
A lot of these kids work and go to school. You don't have to stay. This first part of the meeting was for you. Thank you very much, and we hope to see you again next year.
I want to do one other thing. I want to get a motion to approve all the applicants, so.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve all the applicants that
Awesome.
has announced.
Second. You want to call it, Russell, or no?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, let's see. Legislative update we're going to do, and so Evan Jenny, if you'd come up, please, we'd appreciate it. He's one of our state representative, handles part of the town, and he's here to give us an update. However you want to do it. You want to face the audience? Take the mic out?
Sure, absolutely.
Whatever works, whatever you want to do.
Yeah, no, we can do that. And of course, I believe Representative Stark and I will answer any questions that anyone has for us. Yeah, sure. Oh, yeah. Yeah, well, this does feel weird. Anyway.
You're going to be next.
Representative Evan Jenny from District 99 with the eastern portion of Southwest Ranches, my friend and colleague, Representative Richard Stark, who covers the western half of Southwest Ranches. This year, we, well, I remember last year when I was here, the main thing that this body asked of me was to make sure that money for the guardrails got put into the budget. And I'm happy to report that there will be a six-figure expenditure for guardrails by the state of Florida. So, look forward to those going up and down Griffin Road. So, that's a big thing. As someone who has never personally lived in Southwest Ranches, but always lived on Griffin Road, or near Griffin Road their entire life, that it's taken this long, I think, is a bit excessive. But I'm happy to report that the state will start putting more of those in along the canal. So, that's a big thing for safety. There were, there was other money that was vetoed by the governor, dealing with a water project. We'll fight again and make him see the importance of that, and had the impact it'll have on the quality of life here in Southwest Ranches. There were some other items that we need to continue working on. But all in all, you know, the number-one priority we did get taken care of this year. So, we're looking forward to continue working with that. Your lobbyists from Southern Strategy always keep us in the loop. And I'm very happy to say that this is, Representative Stark's one of the hardest-working members of the legislature. You'll find very few people that aren't chairs of appropriations committees or things like that that spend as much time as Representative Stark does working at the process. So, know that we'll continue to work on this on your behalf, in behalf of the citizens of the town of Southwest Ranches. So, I'll hand it over to Representative Stark, and of course, answer any and all questions that anyone has.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. If you remember, I did a presentation here about a month ago. But to remind you, roadside barriers. Remember? So, we got the roadside barriers done. Now, you had a question for me last time I was here, did you not? All right. Now, I'm going to ask, no, no, I'm going to help you. I'm going to ask you for help here. Now, this is, this is a young lady. She asked me a very good question. She said that when we do the appropriations, that part of the dollars that we get for education come from the gaming industry. And it seems to me that where is that money going? Doesn't seem we're getting all of the gaming money. Now, by the way, part of the answer for you that I didn't answer for you when I was here, is that a lot of the money that we do get goes to the Bright Future scholarships for the college students. But Representative Jenny has been around the legislature a little bit longer than I have, and he is one of our, he really is our go-to person in the House of Representatives on policy and what's going on. And I appreciate that he said that I'm hardworking. I'm trying to get where he is now, because he really has a lot of integrity in what we do. Is this something you might be able to answer?
A little bit, without the specifics. But of course, I'll be, I'll get your, if it's all right, if I can get your contact information, we can get a definitive answer. But on the, on the whole, a lot of times what we see is, most of the money that you're talking about that's earmarked like that goes into trust funds, typically speaking. I'll have to get the specifics of everything. I'm not sure which one would come into play. And oftentimes, what we'll see is those trust funds, there's only one trust fund in the state of Florida that by law cannot be swept and used, swept and used for another purpose. It does not have to deal with education, though. So, because of that, that's a lot of times what happens. And the formulas that are used in education, that's really the overriding factor that we're seeing, because growth currently is rewarded more than size, if that makes any sense. So, if you have a high percentage of growth from year to year, the way the formula currently sits, more money ends up going to counties that have that growth, rather than the larger counties like ourselves, Miami Dade, Palm Beach County, Orange County, places like that with a more larger, more stable, while still growing, not growing at the same rate of a place like, let's say, Pasco County, just north of Tampa, which is growing at a huge rate. They're going to reach a million people sometime pretty soon. So, you see, it's a suburb of Tampa, and it's just really exploded to the north of Tampa. So, you're seeing areas like that get more money. And that's always been a constant struggle. But more and more, we're seeing some of that funding being watered down, and not, folks that are growing not so, being so richly rewarded. But in the state of Florida, we're still not spending, I think, enough of our overall budget towards that. So, it's always going to be a little bit of a problem until we change that. But in terms of more than anything, it's that formula that rewards growth over current size that really hurts us in terms of us not getting our fair share, for lack of a better term, of the education dollars. But if I could get your information, I can get you a very specific in terms of where the money goes. Okay, well, there we go.
Well, I don't, should we ask the, the folks for if they have any questions for us? I mean.
Whatever you want, gentlemen.
I mean, I'm happy, because I, because I did a legislative update here either last month or the month before. And I don't know that everybody here is here that was there at that time. But since we've got two of us here, if there's anybody who had any questions for us.
There's one thing, and maybe it'll, it'll give some people, if you do have a question sometime, to think of it. The one thing I would say, moving forward, that I think, especially in your roles as, as members of this council, moving forward, Tallahassee, the terrain is, moving forward, is quite uncertain. It's not necessarily hazardous to anyone's health, but it is uncertain. You're having a legislature and a governor's office that, right now, are on a collision course with one another, and have been for some time. So, I don't think it'll, it'll go to full-on demolition derby. But that is something to be aware of, moving forward, that, that could color how the rest of the next two years really go, more than anything else that comes into play, as we saw last year with the massive budget, the massive budget vetoes versus what we saw this year, which a much, much smaller amount.
You mentioned that our illustrious governor vetoed some water improvement money.
Yes. There was a water project, I believe, I actually have it, I can tell you the exact title of that line item, if you give me one moment. And my apologies for not having it on the ready. But, let's see. There was a drainage improvement project that would have helped clear out a lot of the water here. And as somebody who just drove all the way down Griffin, we need as much help as we can get on that. That's something that we'll continue to get. We got it in the budget. There's no reason to think that we won't again this year. Both Representative Stark and I will have another year of seniority, and another year of being able to work with folks on both sides of the aisle when it comes to bettering our community. And that's the one thing, when it comes to stuff like this, it's not time to be, to deal in partisan nonsense. We've just got to get it done for the community. So, yes. Ma'am? I believe that's what the budget line item this time was for. But, but I give you my word, it was something that we were, session won't begin for another eight or nine months. In those eight or nine, I can promise you, in the next few months, actually, once the elections are done, that we'll be able to move forward and start working on plans to get more and more and more done. And that's really, I think, would be the goal for everyone involved. But to be honest with you, I haven't talked with anyone involved in the process right now about it. But you're absolutely right. I mean, it's, it needs to be done everywhere. I think, I think it's more of that. I think it's more of that than anything else. Yes, no, absolutely. And, and what we can do is this, we can get, if you can give me your information as well, tomorrow morning, I can have my staff get ahold of the Florida Department of Transportation and find out where the exact barriers will be going up in this round. So, we can get that information. That's actually something I think everybody would, would like to have. So, we'll get, we'll get that distributed to everybody involved. Yes, ma'am.
Somebody else straight ahead?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, yeah, we're going to follow up on that. You know, and getting any appropriations anywhere is never an easy thing. I mean, I spent a lot of time going back and forth during the appropriations process, hoping to make sure that this, I mean, and Senator Jenny, you got an upgrade. Representative Jenny as well. I, sorry, I was called, I was called senator, my US senator today. So, I mean, every, we get, you know, we're called everything except they're representative. But yeah, I mean, this is something that we just constantly have to work on. You know, if we know it's something that's being requested, or something that we even see, or something that we run by the Department of Transportation, you know, then we can get it into play. But, you know, it doesn't usually happen overnight. I mean, I mean, we had things, like even with this, when working on this one, I mean, I tried to change, actually changed the name from guardrails to roadside barriers, because we were nervous that it might not go through that way. Thank God, it went through anyway. But, you know, even sometimes a $20,000 appropriation's not easy to get through. So, it's just something that we have to know it's there, we have to prove it needs to be done, and we have to sometimes hope the governor's in good mood and he doesn't, because we do have what we call a line item veto here. Governor doesn't have to veto everything. He can just take certain things out and take it right out and veto it.
But I can tell you this, within a couple months of last year's meeting when I was here, I had spoken to the, the person that is now the governor's chief of staff about this. And she indicated from day one, so, to his credit, when the actual danger of what the canals around here are, they reacted promptly in the very next session. So, even, I do have to give credit where it's due. I don't know how, if they knew how dangerous it truly was. But then, when we told them that somebody actually passed away the same day that he vetoed the line item last year, it made more sense, I think.
Put freedom or liberty in the name. Okay, well, that's, that's a good idea. So, we can pass the freedom and liberty appropriations for barriers for Southwest Ranches. Okay, well, we'll, we'll do that. We'll work on that. Okay. All right, gentlemen?
Anybody have any questions?
Appreciate you coming by.
Yeah, we greatly appreciate. Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Great. Thank you. All right, next, we've got Southern Strategies Group, Nelson Diaz and Edgar Castro. Whoever wants, if you want to come up together, individual, or?
Thanks for the, the opportunity, and thank you to the residents of Southwest Ranches for the opportunity to represent you again in Tallahassee this year. You've got two great, excellent legislators who fight very hard for your town. And, and I, you know, I don't know I have much more to add than what they've added. It was a great, it was a good session this year. This is the third year in a row that, that we get guardrail money in the budget. As was mentioned, the governor vetoed them last year immediately with your two fine representatives. We met with the governor's office, showed them pictures and the story of, of the unfortunate accident that happened last year, and other accidents that have happened. The vice mayor came to Tallahassee and did some incredible lobbying work. And, and so, you know, I think that really changed their position, although he didn't veto it the first year. So, I don't know, you guys can decide what you want to seek next year, what appropriations you want to seek. You know, put the projects together. I've been talking to Andy quite a bit, and, and we'll continue working with Andy to put the projects together, meet with DOT, talk to DOT, work with your legislators, and present that to, to the governor's office before session starts, so that once we get into session, there are no surprises with the governor's office. So, with that, you know, again, thank you for the opportunity. We love Southwest Ranches. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and...
Not really a question, just a comment that we appreciate, obviously, all the work that you all put in, and your partnership with the legislators, and how that all works together. It's been, it's been very beneficial to us in a lot of really critical projects, and like we said, things that are going to save people's lives here. So, it's more than just money, it's lives, and we really appreciate it. It's very, you know, it's, it's been a great, great partnership.
Yeah, we'll do it again next year if you want.
I think, you know, just from an overall standpoint, the, you know, we're working on the projects, we're in the budget season, so the projects are going to come out of the budget. And, believe me, we'll be in touch as far as...
That's great. I didn't mention, Representative Jenny kind of mentioned it, session starts in March of next year. Committee meetings start in December, but more realistically, January of next year. So, we'll need everything in place no later than December-ish. So, we have, if you guys can, can do your priority list and, and have the budget, you know, the projects ready.
We'll be way beyond it past then, by then.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I wanted to just add on to what Steve said, that, you know, we appreciate your efforts, especially how you bird dog particular projects that are, you know, very, very safety-oriented in our little, in our, in our town. And, you know, we'll come up with another list and have that. But we really do appreciate your efforts.
Also, I know the town, I think you guys were somewhat concerned with the fracking legislation. And we, we worked with the League of Cities and the, and the League of Counties to kill that, that legislation, along with a number of senators who were actually in the majority, and who, who helped kill that bill in the Senate. So, that was one of the bills that we were working on in terms of legislation. So...
Yeah, that can come up again.
And it will come up.
Yeah, it's going to keep coming up.
So, we got to stay on that.
Something we have to just stay vigilant on, because it's, the name of the game is to wear everybody down.
Right. And we'll be on that as well. There were no issues on hobby farms or any of that stuff. None of that came up. So, so, anyway.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks very much. All right, let's see. We've got proclamation for Code Enforcement Week. I'm going to have Russell read this, because my cataracts are acting up. I'm going to be getting cataract surgery soon. So, so it's read smoothly. I'm going to ask Russell to read it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is a proclamation for Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week, which is June 6 through June 10 of 2016. Whereas Code Enforcement Officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens in this community through the enforcement of building, zoning, housing, animal control, fire safety, environmental, and other codes and ordinances. And whereas, excuse me, and whereas Code Enforcement Officers are not, are often not credited for the jobs that they do in saving lives and improving neighborhoods. And whereas every day, assisted by support and program staff, they attempt to provide quality customer service to the public for the betterment of the community. And whereas too many times, their efforts go unnoticed, even after code compliance has been accomplished due to their efforts and expertise. And whereas Code Enforcement Officers are dedicated, well-trained, and highly responsible individuals who take their jobs seriously, and are proud of their department and the local government within which they serve. And whereas the Florida Association of Code Enforcement has declared the first week of June be set aside by local government to honor and recognize their Code Enforcement Officers. Now therefore, through the authority vested in me by the Town Council of Southwest Ranches, Florida, I do hereby proclaim the week of June 6 through 10, 2016, as Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week in Southwest Ranches, Florida, in accordance with the statewide observance of the same and encouraged citizens of Southwest Ranches to join this Town Council in expressing appreciation for the dedication and outstanding service provided by the individuals who serve as our Code Enforcement Officers. And witness herof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the Town of Southwest Ranches be affixed this 9th day of June, 2016. And this was signed by your mayor, Jeff Nelson.
I want to say, what amazing job our Code Enforcement guys do for a town like we have, that we don't want Code Enforcement at all in any way, shape, or form. And you all do an absolutely bang-up job in communication with the residents, in trying to keep it calm, cool, and collective. And the job you do, I don't know how you do it, but I commend you personally for how awesome you guys do. So anyhow, do we want to go down front and get a picture with them with this? Or what do you want to do?
Yeah, yeah, let's do.
Come on.
Perfect, perfect. Mr. Vice Mayor. Why don't you come around here and shake his hand?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to just add on to that, just kind of, you did a great job. But, you know, sometimes people come up to us as council members and say, you know, that's a thankless job. Well, it may be, but that's a thankless job. And you all, you all had to do an amazing job at it, you know. And it's, it's probably one of the toughest jobs here in town. And it's just, it's nice to know, when you're sitting up here, that you've got professionals down there that handle it properly, handle it fairly, and always try and work things out as best you can before the hammer comes down. You know, do it the easy way first. And that's the way it should be. So, really appreciate it, and thank you for all you do.
Anybody else? Anybody else want to say anything?
Yeah, I agree with what Steve said on this thing, because, especially in our town. Our, you know, in cities, they have set rules and everything. But we kind of bend some of those rules here. So, which makes it pretty hard for these guys to have to know where that line is and how, how you say. You know, in other towns, we have a rule in this town, other towns go crazy. Domestic animals can make any noise they want, and it's legal. Domestic animals can make any noise they want, and it's legal. Well, you know, in a city, that don't happen. So that's why it makes our code enforcement officer kind of has a tough job because he's got to kind of bend that rule when it needs to be bent. We appreciate it, thank you.
All right, anybody else? We're good? Awesome, thank you again. I want to add one little thing. I'm the only one that happens to have a little more time, I think, than some of us, but I come to most of the code enforcement hearings and get to sit in out there with the audience when they're up here dealing with it. So I think some of the residents are a little disappointed. Sometimes it takes 60, 90, or 120 days to resolve some things. But if they understand it, you explain it to them. I try to help out and explain sometimes and go outside and talk to people, but what a job they do. I wouldn't want to be in their shoes, but for what they do for us is amazing. Thank you again. All right, public comment, you want to read?
Vice Mayor, we don't have any speakers signed up for a public comment.
Okay, is anybody interested in speaking that wants to? Okay. Hey, I'm trying to help out, what can I tell you? Any board reports? Wow, you sure? All right, council member comments?
There's not much.
Gary wanted to go first.
Yeah, well, I was at MPO today. Like I say, this thing is still going around about the finished sales tax and everything. So we haven't decided of you yet, so you don't expect anything to come from y'all either yet, so.
Okay, Gary?
Yeah, I was just going to, I just had one thing. I just wanted to congratulate Chief Downing, Fire Chief Downing in the town of Davie, who's now our fire chief also, and a true professional. And I wanted to congratulate her as, you know, for her promotion.
Absolutely.
That's it.
I'm going to jump in and join you on that. Steve Bright Cruz and myself were over in Davie last night with some residents, and Russell was there and his wife, and Dee Schroeder, happy to come, my friend. I don't know who else was there, if I left anybody else. Sandy came, and we were there for the event, and it was a really good showing.
It was a great event, yeah.
Yeah, so I want to thank you for coming, and I was glad I was there. And, yeah, so Chief Downing, congratulations, and look forward to meeting and chatting with you. We had a good time. I was just joining him, so.
No, I don't really have anything to say, just going to mention that as well. We're just, congratulations to Chief Downing. I had the opportunity, the fortunate opportunity to, she was leading the CERT program that I went through, so I got to know her a little bit, just a really quality person. And it's really exciting to have her in that position, so congratulations to her.
All right, legal comments. We happen to have the distinguishing Jim Brady here with us this evening. Keys out, anything from legal, Jim?
It's always such a great pleasure to be out here. And I mean that sincerely, and I've seen every other city, town in Broward County. I've sued most of them. And this is by far right at the top. So congratulations to you.
Administrative comments, and I'm going to guess Russell's going to take that over for this evening.
Just a quick, a couple of comments, Vice Mayor. One, Andy, as you know, is on vacation this week, and I'll be here kind of trying to hold things down. I'll be working three times as hard and still won't be able to do half the job that he does, but I'll be doing my best for you guys. He could not be there last night to congratulate Chief Downing in person, so I just wanted to extend that to you, Rudy, to extend that back to Chief Downing on Andy's behalf. And that's it, that's all I have.
You know, Vice Mayor, I have to say something.
Go right ahead.
You know, Russell does a fantastic job when Andy is out of town, but it seems like we always have a major crisis. So, so let's, you know, yeah, let's keep everything under control. But Russell does a great job of handling whatever comes up.
Thank you.
Okay, how about approval of the minutes?
Show move.
Second.
Anybody in the public have any corrections? Because you do find them sometimes for us. All right, no public comment? Call the question?
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes. Councilmember Fisk Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
All right. Adjournment, anybody want to motion? Motion to adjourn, awesome. Great, thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming out.